I'd like to call the order of the October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five Regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the town of Chino Valley and call the meeting to order. Commissioner Peasey, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a full board with alternate Commissioner Marabito standing in for one of the missing commissioners. I'd like to move forward to item C, which is the consent calendar. Do we have anybody on the commission that has any problem with that?
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion in multiple seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move forward to item D one, which is CUP two thousand and twenty-five dash oh three. This is a request by Christie Signs on behalf of Jay, Bertie J Investments LLC, for the approval of a conditional use permit to allow for construction of a freestanding electronic message center sign for the Living Waters Church located at seven one eight South State Route eighty-nine, Chino Valley, Arizona, eight six three two three. Has anybody on the commission spoken with anybody on this item?
No.
No.
All right, we're clean.
Good evening, thank you Chair, Vice Chair, fellow commissioners. My name is Jessica Barrigan, Senior Planner for the Development Services Department. Before you this evening is a request for conditional use permit, as Chair stated, for an electronic message center, or EMC for short. It's brought to you as case number CUP two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three. So the request for a conditional use permit was submitted by Christie Signs on behalf of Bertie J Investments. You can see here the vicinity of the location at seven one eight South State Route eighty-nine. The signage code, according to section four point two one point five C in the town's UDO requires a conditional use permit be approved for the installation of an EMC sign. Staff observes that the applicant has completed all the applicable review and approval procedures that are set forth in section one point nine point three of the town's UDO for conditional use permits. So in front of you is a site plan submitted by the applicant. It illustrates the approximate location of the post sign. It demonstrates the minimum six foot separation between the edge of the property line abutting the state Route eighty-nine highway. The subject property is currently zoned commercial light and falls under the rural residential land use designation as defined the Make-A-Chino two thousand and forty general plan. The zoning district CL does allow for churches and places of worship. The onsite land use is primarily the church with a rear yard storage facility that is supplemental to the church operation. And adjacent uses are primarily commercial with residential to the west. Staff did observe a minor oversight on the general plan designation that is listed on the eastern property, which states regional commercial, that should actually be neighborhood commercial. So I just wanted, it doesn't have any bearing on the request today, but I wanted to bring that up as a correction. The proposal indicates the sign height is approximately thirteen feet with an eight foot minimum clearance from the ground level to the bottom of the panel. And this conforms to the signage standards in section four point two one point five C in the signage code. Additionally, the applicant has committed to town's efforts towards dark sky exterior lighting. The applicant has demonstrated their commitment towards this by providing lighting efficient and safety technology to provide dark skies certification from the signage manufacturer along with the following technical capabilities. Preset brightness levels that are not user adjustable and ensuring compliance with signage or lighting regulations. Automatic dimming functionality using ambient lighting sensors to adjust brightness based on the environmental conditions. A default freeze mode that activates the event in the event of a malfunction preventing unintended or disruptive displays. Features six second displays, no flashing and dark sky lighting. And the signage is built with durability in mind with weather resistance rating. All properties within five hundred foot radius were notified to attend the neighborhood meeting held on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five at the church location. Zero members of the neighborhood were in attendance. There were no concerns over the CUP requests and A.D.O. provided some generic conditions for EMC signages along State Route eighty-nine. The conditional use permit request conforms to all the applicable town zoning regulations found in chapter one fifty-four of the Unified Development Ordinance. It is professionally designed, poses no adverse effects or impacts, and supports the church's ability to communicate events. With that said, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to the Town Council a recommendation to approve conditional use permit CUP two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three as presented and subject to the conditions of approval that are fed in detachment A of your packet. On your screen are copies of the conditional, or the conditions of approval. And this concludes staff's presentation, I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for town staff while they're up there? Do we have a time limit set for this conditional use permit?
We put a one year for commencement of construction, but no, none for the actual permit.
Okay, should we not possibly put some end on it even if it's forever?
This one is a little bit interesting because when someone puts, actually puts the infrastructure in, it's hard for us to say, well, in five years you have to pull your sign out. So we usually don't do that.
So, and I understand that, and it's not that I want to limit the time specifically, but if we leave it open ended, that's okay?
It's okay, I mean, if you want to come back in ten years, I mean, technology will change, whatever. They'll probably be back in if they want to make changes to it.
Okay, so it's not a detriment if we don't?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Get back to the meeting minutes here. Okay. Is the applicant here?
The owner of the property is here. They don't have anything further to add, but if you have any questions, he's available.
Okay, well, the applicant is not required to speak, but if you would like to speak, you're welcome to do so. Okay, he passes on that. So we can't ask him any questions, so we're gonna open the public portion of the meeting for this item. You, public has an opportunity to speak on this item only. You get three minutes to state anything that you have to say about this process. And would anybody like to step up and speak? All right, so we're gonna close the public comment portion. Do we have any questions for staff based on our comments from the public? None. All right, we're gonna close the public portion of this item, and I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve CUP twenty-five oh something oh three.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, I'm assuming as written, yes?
As written, yes.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion is carried unanimously, thank you.
Jerian, did you get who seconded? Okay, who seconded?
Right there.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move forward to action items, which we don't have any. We do have some information items from town staff. Thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Have a good day, sir.
So, we actually have three information items for you tonight. One is just the status update of the last item that went before you, which was, drumroll, solar.
How could you possibly forget?
I know.
Renewable.
Renewable energy, thank you. So that did make its way to Town Council, and they did approve it unanimously, so we are free and clear for now.
Awesome, that is great.
Next two we want to talk about, and it came in the form of your amended agenda packet. Yeah, that would be. So what Lori is handing out to you this evening are two copies of House bills that were a result of this year's legislative sessions from the state. SB, or HB twenty-four forty-seven and HB twenty-nine twenty-eight. I'll start with the good news. Town staff was very concerned with HB twenty-nine twenty-eight, and that's your thick one. That one was a mandate by state legislature in an attempt to address combat, or address affordable housing and attainable housing in the state of Arizona. It was a mandate for municipalities and counties to allow by right additional dwell, accessory dwelling units on all single family properties in the state of Arizona. It gets worse. So the require, or the mandate was by right on any single family property, regardless of acreage, you were allowed to have a, one attached accessory dwelling unit and one detached. So regardless of size, you would now have three homes on a single piece of property. Then on properties that were one acre or greater, you had the opportunity to add in additional accessory dwelling unit for four total homes, so three dwelling units accessory, and then your single family if you had one acre or greater. There, this originally came out of legislature back in two thousand and twenty-four. It did have a population cap of, or floor of seventy-five thousand. So if you had a municipality of less than seventy-five thousand, it didn't apply to us. We do not have that. So that was two thousand and twenty-four, that was poorly worded, poorly structured bill at the time. And so there was some concerns in two thousand and twenty-four about the applicability of that population exemption. So legislature in their infinite wisdom this year decided, hey, we're gonna fix that, and they made it even more confusing. So in the twenty-four rendition, the seventy-five thousand population cap was found in section A, which you'll see in your packet. The twenty-five rendition strikes that. And those who typically read and interpret ordinances say you are now removing that cap because if you're having an exemption, you start with that, and then everything below that is what is your qualifier. State said, no, we're gonna put that at the very end in letter H and say, hey, this section only applies to municipalities of seventy-five thousand or greater. And so we're sitting here thinking, you guys just opened up the floodgates for this, and you have now extended that across the board for all municipalities, and then you only exempted the definitions which follow H. Super silly. So we panicked for a couple days, and they were like, you know what, we're gonna go talk to our attorney, and got a response out of them that says, no, because of some of the wording in the, it says this section only applies to municipalities of seventy-five thousand or greater. He says we are exempt, and we're running.
Right, I mean, when you read it, it looks like we're really not exempt, but because a lot of municipality attorneys argued with the state legislature, they tried to clarify. We still think that if you just look at how it's constructed, we're stuck with it. But because the attorneys worked with the legislature and they fixed it, the legislature thinks we're not required, so we're gonna go with that.
Yep. There is some, I wouldn't say conspiracy, but it's a legitimate concern because when the state rolls out these population exemptions, you'll see a year or two down the line, that exemption will be struck down to fifty thousand. And then another two years, it'll be down to thirty thousand, and it'll eventually roll out statewide. That's typically their MO on this. Talked a little bit to the attorney and, you know, maybe hearsay, but the placing of this population cap may be intentional to easily strike that out in future. So it's just something we gotta pay attention to in the coming legislative, legislature sessions, just to see how that happens, and because if that does happen, you're looking at a very different single family.
Different Chino.
Chino.
So, I have a question, Will. I've looked at this when, when it was going through legislation, and I'm looking at it now. It doesn't say anything about lot coverage.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, does that strike our requirement of maximum lot coverage?
For this, for ADUs, yes.
Yep.
Setbacks too are superseded?
So, so our lot coverage is struck it out now?
For, for ADUs, correct.
So.
When it gets down to our population level. And I just find it interesting, and I guess the legislature make up their own definition, but saying gross floor area is the interior habitable area of a single family dwelling. Normally gross is, you measure the exterior.
Yep.
So.
We love this one a lot.
Well, and you'll find in more urban areas, they use gross floor area and floor area ratios. We don't do that out here. You do it in very urban areas.
Sounds like for condos or townhouses.
Right.
What about wells and septics?
Thank you for bringing that up. So in our forty-eight hours of what are we doing? We were looking at health, safety, life, safety, welfare because we have such a large developed area of Chino Valley that is not on municipal water, municipal sewer, like the urban areas are. And so we have had septic over leaching issues in the past, specifically Chino Meadows. That's where our sewer project, or, you know, our sewer system ended up coming into play is because we got dinged for environmental hazards, specifically nitrate levels, and we were forced to put Chino Meadows on sewer. That same principle, we were looking at and how address, how to address this ADU or how to apply it in Chino, and we were pretty comfortable that because of health, safety, we could mandate that this ADU only applied to properties on town water, town sewer. Now, that would not stop higher density developments that did not have an HOA or CCNRs. So if you essentially have an HOA or CCNR that prohibits ADUs, you are still exempted, the state can't mandate you to have that. Your CCNRs are a private agreement between you, you and your HOA. But say developments like Chino Meadows that no longer have functioning HOAs or CCNRs, they would be available to utilize this provision.
So with the county health department controlling the issuance of septic permits, which they have very strict guidelines, what happens to that?
So we would still ultimately control the building permit that they would have to apply for. And the thought was at the time that we would not be permit because they are on municipal water, or not on municipal sewer systems and water systems. We didn't have to explore this further because we, we got that interpretation from the attorney, and we're, we're gonna not ask many questions. But if this comes to fruition in the future, we're gonna have to cross that road of, you know, if the county says, because right now, I mean, in large one acre plus properties, you can have a guest home on site with whether you, you piggyback on your existing septic or your existing well, and they make it pencil that way. So it might be some sort of trade off that, you know, maybe you can't support the four, but maybe you could support the two. So something to have in the back of our minds as this, as this continues.
So your concern is, your, your guys' interpretation is this applies to us because of where they moved?
Originally, that was the concern.
Until you talked to, and I'll give you my two cents, and I can't believe I'm actually gonna say this, but I'm agreeing with an attorney reading it.
Within the minutes.
It's, I, I understand why they moved it. They just changed the definition in the beginning of A. They still wanted the exemption, and they just threw it at the end. I would agree with the attorney, this would not apply to us.
Perfect, love it.
Yeah.
When, could it go that if they want to add more housing on their property, that they have to connect to city facilities? And that would kind of be cost prohibitive to whoever was wanting to do that project?
Or, or it would, it would work pencil for them. And that, that was the idea, is that if you do have the desire to, you know, you have one acre piece of land, you did want to take advantage of the three additional dwelling units that state mandates that you can have by right, you would have to connect to a municipal sewer system and pay appropriate connection fees.
If it was even available.
If it was even available. The other thing that this bill does is that it prohibits a municipality from talking about additional parking or impact to roads. We can't charge additional fees for that. The only thing that we were allowed to do was to do the impact or the connection fee for water sewer. So outside of that, it tied our hands pretty good. There was a provision, because this was all in the name of affordability, that if you wanted to take advantage of that fourth on a one acre lot, that one of them had to be deed restricted, restricted to an affordable level rental. And they did have some guidelines in there to how you, how they classify that. Who's managing that? We don't have staff to manage that. That's typically found in larger municipalities. They have a complete division that is for, I forget what it's called, housing, neighborhood services kind of thing. So we don't have that here in Chino Valley, so that's a whole other area that we're going potentially. So.
A lot of homeowners associations, they might not restrict an ADA, and they, but they do restrict where you can park, that you have to park in the driveway, not on the road, or not in the front yard. And that would limit too, if they wanted to build and what space they had, there's not any parking place to go with that new.
So this, for those of you who are in HOAs or have, you know, property owner associations, this could be a time to start talking to them, that, that your CCNRs would supersede state mandate. So you have the ability to do that if this is something your CCNRs do not address, that you have, take issue with, or you like, or whatever. Start talking to them and see if they want to amend their CCNRs to preempt this, which technically, yeah.
And it's one thing if you want to add a room on your house for a mother-in-law or, you know, an elderly child that had health issues or something, but, you know, that's adding one person to your septic, whereas, you know, building a whole rental facility, you've got, you know, two adults, two kids, now you've got four people, so.
Another part in there too, that was fantastic, talked about rentals. You could do long-term rentals if you were not on site. So if you wanted to, you had one four acres, or excuse me, one acre, you put your three ADUs on site, have your home, you could rent all four of those out as long as they were a year-long lease. You could do short-term rentals, however, the property owner would have to live on site. Again, whoever manages that, I don't know who. So then you could go Airbnb the other three. And.
Talking about roads. The UDO requires fifty feet access road, private road. A lot of them are grandfathered in at twenty-five feet. If they add these types of homes, would they be required to go to the fifty feet? Because that's a safety requirement, allowing fire trip vehicles and everything else.
Good, that'd be a way to approach it, that because of the health, safety, life, safety standpoint, that if you do not have adequate ingress egress to your property, which is in the form of fifty feet, you don't, can't take advantage of this. So I, I mean, there's potential there, that, that's where our head was going.
We would probably be more challenged with the road stuff, less likely to be challenged on the septic and the water stuff. But that would be the stuff, kinds of stuff we would explore if this comes to fruition for us.
Will ADSP required to have you guys give them a separate address for each home?
Possibly. Possibly separate address, separate meter.
That's the requirement usually.
Yeah.
Unless it's just a bill that hasn't been signed into law yet. It's, it's law.
It's law, yeah. The provision where we started getting a little, again, part of our forty-eight hours of panic was that the municipality has to adopt regulations to implement this by January one. And so this was like, oh crap, we need to go. And, but we don't need to, we're okay on this one. So if there's any more questions on ADUs, I will move over.
As long as we don't exceed seventy-five thousand people.
We'll stop at seventy-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. Next bill is a little less sunny. We have HB twenty-four forty-seven. It is just a one-page bill, so front and back for what you guys have. However, this one has some pretty big ramifications as this is a mandate again from legislature that says all subdivision plats, preliminary and final, are now administratively reviewed and approved or denied. There are no more council actions, planning and zoning actions on any subdivision plats, period. Well, not period.
No public hearing.
No public hearing.
Unless there's a zoning change?
Only if there's a zoning change. So let's say you have the, what do we have?
Bright Star.
Bright Star. If Brights already has their entitlements, which they do, they want to come in and build out the remaining eight hundred homes in a single phase. They absolutely can, after January first, come in and make application to town staff for their final plat, our checklist and criteria is in code. And essentially, planning and zoning in town council would not see the item. So this again is in an effort to streamline saying that administrative, sorry, that municipal processes and red tape essentially, this is them cutting the red tape and getting rid of public input on subdivisions. We are still grappling with how we are going to implement this. We're, we're kind of looking more at the no public hearings and saying, well, that doesn't mean neighborhood meetings. So we very much value citizen input. And we are kind of probably gonna try to die on this hill with ensuring that public input is taken into account on subdivision developments because those, that input, that constructive input is what helps make neighborhoods work and communities work. And by saying that we don't need that because it's too bureaucratic, I think is wrong. I believe Lori is of the same opinion. I, I get where this comes from because there is a lot of that not in my backyard mentality where people oppose everything and anything just because. However, this is taking the issue, correcting the issue, I believe, in an overcorrection. So we're still grappling with how this will roll out in Chino Valley, what we are legally allowed to do. You will see this come to you as a text amendment because we do have to amend the UDO. It will come by the end of the year to P and Z. This does have a January one mandate by legislature for rules to be on books. We are doing our best to meet that deadline, however, the holiday season screws up when we can take things forward. So we have the council Thanksgiving break and then council New Year's, or excuse me, Christmas, New Year's break coming up. So we'll probably get it to you guys December, but then ultimately council January. We're, we're gonna do our best to get it by, by January one.
So this line twenty, that's number three now, allow out risks for certain onsite perimeter grading and drainage works or infrastructure? So like Messenger can come back and build on that little strip of land where all the water rolled down and flooded all the houses on the north side of one? So we can't stop people from building if there's flood issues?
They still need to make sure, you know, the plans would still need to be approved by town officials, so it would essentially be frank signing off on saying that this meets whatever it needs to. So they, it would essentially be frank signing off on saying that this meets whatever it needs to.
The, the at-risk submittal is that they submit the plans and then they start the grading. And then if the plans don't work, then they have to revise the plans and redo the grading.
Thank you.
So, so they still have the issue of the drainage.
Correct. They still have to address it. It's not that they're getting an exemption.
One question. Has there been a thought of having a special meeting for the town council? So this does get in place by the deadline the state has given us?
We are in discussions. We're gonna shoot for the December eighteenth special.
I mean, the attorney, the attorney may tell you that, yeah, it has to be done by.
We will ask.
We will ask, yeah.
So the self-certification.
There, yeah, I, I will say there are obviously other pieces to this. Self-certification usually rolls out really well in larger municipalities where you have the. Sorry, let me stop. I feel like I interrupted you. I apologize here.
You didn't, but the self-certification. By architects and professional engineers, the town engineer still has authority for the final say?
I believe so. These, I don't believe we are, our intention is to adopt a self-certification plan. We, we have the ability not to in this case. You have to essentially develop a whole program and like a test to essentially make sure that these architects are. Certified so that they can do either site plans without. I can't remember what it essentially foregoes. Essentially, they can do a permit and then. I, I, it, it's out there. So do they issue permits themselves? So they do the work themselves and then come in for later? Okay. So they assume responsibility. They then do the work and does the town essentially get notified post-completion?
I think we would need to set up a whole program that, that works for areas that have a lot of distance. Where you don't have enough staff to get there in time, like the county.
Fortunately, this bill says may.
Yeah, that's right. And that's why we're saying no.
So the council probably says, no, we're not gonna adopt it.
We, we don't have the, the staff power.
So this, does the new, this supersede changes zoning?
No. Zoning will still always go before.
So if somebody wants to come in and create a sober living facility or a care, adult care home or something like that. They're still gonna have to come through to get a CUP.
Debatable. There's protections that we cannot, I don't wanna, it's a different topic. So this is still.
It's up to a certain number of residents or whatever.
The state saying that because it's a protected class, we can't treat them differently. It starts going into ADA stuff. It, it's weird, but you're, th- this is only for subdivisions or site plans. Which we already are doing administratively. The, the biggest change you're gonna see out of this in, in Chino is the subdivision not going before council.
So if they have a town, if you have a community meeting and everybody's opposed to it, what happens?
So this is where we are talking about, cause, so it doesn't mean we have to administratively approve everything. We still have the ability to deny. And then based on that, it can be appealed. So let's say we have a super controversial development. It's, you know, they're, they're saying that, you know, this meets their zoning. We say no, we issue the denial, the, the letter of denial. They have the ability to appeal within thirty days and guess who it gets appealed to?
Zoning commission.
So then we get our public.
So, so that's one way we're looking at it. The other way is, it talks about no public hearing before council. You know, you guys are not council. We could have a public meeting on it and then your decision could get appealed to council. So we're, we're still working through the pieces of how that actually works.
I think so. Public meeting is kind of important, just to the whole philosophy of how we live. I mean, I don't really wanna be deterred by it. I would like to listen to people this, this evening. There wasn't anybody objecting to the sign. So who, who am I to object to it? Seems okay. But then on the solar, look at everybody that showed up at the church. I mean, it's our way to speak.
Well, and it's a way to take a temperature on the community.
Is, is that really the only difference from what we do now? So if prior to this, Bright Star came out and said, we wanna build out our other eight hundred parcel lot plats, whatever. They, it would have to come before us and it'd have to go before council for approval for them to do that. Even though they already own the land and.
All that stuff, yes. So the, the idea is.
Was it something that was submitted prior and because they didn't build on it, it's, it's, you know, they've run out of time? Or that's just land they own and it was intention of something they wanted to do?
So that when, like in, in the, in the case of Bright Star, they got a planned area development for the entire twelve hundred unit subdivision. And over the years, they've only just developed it in phases. So they've left the other portion unplatted. They could have come in and, and platted, you know, the entirety of the twelve hundred units. They just didn't do that and there's business decisions behind that. And so, a lot of the time, whenever you have somebody coming in for a plat. In phases like this, they're also coming in with asks on like setback reductions. Or they're, you know, here's your master plan. We don't wanna do it a little different. That kind of meets master plan, but doesn't really. So that, that's where we, we take that extra public input in and, you know, if we've already got neighbors living there, does this fit? Does this make sense? Does this driveway, you know, connecting to the street make sense? So i- i- it's kind of back and forth. We, we've seen decent proposals get muddled by that NIMBY backyard. And I believe this is what that's ultimately trying to combat, but it is.
Hey, I moved here for my views. I don't want something built behind me even though somebody else owns the land.
Correct. So, but to answer your question, that, that is gonna be the, the, really the only change from this. Cause it talks about that we municipalities should have to administratively approve site plans too. There's a lot of communities that take all site plans to council for approval. So if a Walmart was coming in, you'd look at the site plan and say, cool, it meets our code. Council says the blessed. We haven't done that here. We don't do that here. So the, the biggest change coming out of this is it's gonna be the subdivision plats. But you'll still see entitlement cases. You'll still see CUPs. I don't think there are temporary permits, anything like that.
This doesn't address those. It just addresses the division of land.
Division of land.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So you will see a text amendment for this December and hopefully we will get a special meeting in December for council.
So if a lot of this hinges off the zoning requirements and the building code requirements. I guess it's best that we have some really up-to-date, in shape zoning codes.
Great segue into the fact that we are now redoing our zoning code. We have our. We just did our onboard meeting, just staff. September twenty-fifth, so they are engaged. We have a signed contract and we're moving forward. We will have more information to come here, but we're looking at rough timeline of eighteen months to get that done. So we're, we're going and you'll, you'll start seeing more stuff come out here before too long. Right now, we're in the, they're in the data collection phase. So it's sending us all of, or us sending them all of, you know, our existing, you know, zoning code. What does our GIS data look like? What does our, you know, do we have these nuances? Every, you know, planner essentially has notes all over their margins of things that we can change, what we wish we could change, what doesn't work. So getting them all of that stuff to them and then they're gonna work through that and then we'll ultimately start doing public outreach.
I don't have a time frame on that, but the zoning work group that we've got, the, for, that's been in place. We meet with, they meet with our consultant next month.
And yeah, we'll start with there and as it goes, we'll get more of a timeline that we can present to you as it goes forward.
We'll keep you posted.
Wow.
What about the livestock one? Is that coming back soon?
We are going to start tackling that at the beginning of the year. We wanted to do it sooner, but these house bills took precedent. It will be, livestock will start before the zoning code rewrite is, I mean, we're, we're not waiting for that.
And we're hoping that because the consultants do work in other jurisdictions, that they have some suggestions for us on that.
That would, anything will be helpful when we get to that point.
And that is all, yeah, cool. That's all the staff has for information items.
Thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
All right. So the next part is F two. Does anybody on the commission? Have a desire to speak about anything or have a concern that we haven't talked about this evening? All right.
Just that there was another APS or Salt River Project. Battery storage down in Phoenix that caught on fire. So glad we don't have them.
Yeah, this, I just feel like we're being as proactive as we can be in that subject. Anybody else? All right. So we're gonna move forward to the chairman. I really didn't have anything to say until this showed up, but I'm, I just have to question. If you've got, what's that one point six zoning ordinance? And you're gonna try to stick four buildings on top of a property that can't even hold one, where are we gonna go with that? Are we going up multiple stories?
There is restriction on that too.
Pardon?
They said that has a restriction on it too. It's only about twenty-five foot.
Okay, but there, and, and I'm not gonna go too far into this, cause it, you know, we just got this information. But it seems like they're working really hard to shift any sort of management. Of what people do on their own property completely away, which ordinarily I would not be horribly opposed to that. But what they've done here. Th- th- this could eventually turn in, not for us quickly, but eventually it could wind up here. And there's a lot of issues. That could come up with this. So that's my two cents for today.
Correct. So when you look at the general plan, that gives you your density. This upends what we spent the time putting the general plan in place. Because it changes our total density throughout the community.
Totally against the wishes of the people that live in this town.
Correct.
Totally, completely. And that's wrong. Somebody in far away should not have that kind of control of where we live.
Overreach the legislature should let the towns and the cities manage themselves. Because the towns and cities know what's best for their town and their city.
Yeah, and the state legislature just proved that.
Well, if you see, you've got a large metropolitan area and they're sprawling further and further and further. And it's taking longer to commute back to town center to work and stuff. Or towns like Tempe, they're landlocked and they wanna grow. They can go up. I know a lot of the townhouses around the university are on half acre lots. And a lot of them have put apartments on top of their garages for college students and stuff. And I think it applies more to that than rural towns that are out here where we have plenty of land to keep spreading. Don't need to dense.
I think the Indians thought that at one point. Man, this is really interesting. All right. There's no public here to speak. We're gonna pass them up. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move re-adjourn.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Thank you very much.